Tonight, we have a special guest with us to lead our pledge. Her name is Ms. Natalie Kane and she is from Boris Community Learning Center. Natalie is a 5th grade student at Boris and has attended since kindergarten. She participates in the Gifted and Talented Program and is the captain of the Safety Patrol. At school, Natalie consistently provides an excellent example for other students to look at. She is kind and helpful to her teachers and other students. She is reliable and demonstrates excellent leadership skills on a daily basis. These are wonderful things. Natalie lives with her mother, father, a sister, and a brother. She plays basketball, which she incidentally has to go to after the meetings. We're not going to keep her too long. Loves to read and enjoys arts and crafts in her spare time. Welcome Natalie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you like to introduce some of the people you brought with you today?
I have my mom and my dad.
Can you get it from there, Mr. Williams?
Good job.
I'm not sure if I scared them to death. I tell them that the room gets really quiet before they speak and then they all look at me like it's a scary night. Thank you so much. Now she's off to basketball practice. So thank you very much for bringing her today. Keep up the good work. Okay ladies and gentlemen of the board, we need community and school reflections in this very busy season. Yes, Veronica.
In the midst of all the things that are going on, one of the news personalities on MSNBC, I believe it's Melissa Harris at the end of her presentation, she highlighted a young lady named Madison from Cleveland, Ohio. And what Madison was talking about was one word: books. And Madison was emphatic. In fact, even the commentator said, in my terms, preaching about books and how books were important. And she was dealing with the free library. Will you bring a book? And she was encouraging people to bring a book. When you bring a book, you take a book. Books are important. And she kept emphasizing that. And I thought that was very special. And all that's going on that we have to deal with, there's a bright spot, that there's an importance to reading books. Books are not out of style. They are very important. So we encourage our youngsters that are there, not only to do their things that you're going to show us that I have no knowledge of, but to also read books.
I know that video went viral. That was just very, very popular. That's wonderful. Yes.
I just want to piggyback on that. Dayton School System has, one of their school board members has created, what they call these, what Reverend Walker was talking about, are these neighborhood libraries where you take a book and you bring a book. I encourage parents, community members, anyone to go to their website and look this up because they do have it on their website. And you can see how you can develop your own community library in your own community. So I think it's really good. And reading is always really good for our kids. So please look at that and maybe we can create some community libraries here in the city of Akron. Thank you.
We do have one in Helen Square. It's right there. So it's an art display that holds books and free lending libraries.
Thank you, Patrick. Good job.
Tim, did you have anything else?
I attended a couple of, I think, really important meetings the last week. The mayor hosted a forum, My Brother's Keeper, that I believe they intend to champion here locally, Akron, and the leadership of Dr. Terry Albanese and Billy Soul. And it's really the President Obama's piece about how we address some of the impediments to success for African-American students, in particular African-American males. So there's, I think, six major tenants, not seven, that they're looking at addressing, starting with early education, with some of the implications of getting our young folks, particularly African-American males, ready to enter kindergarten. And the importance of early education, the importance early education is going to play in that process. One of the panelists was our superintendent. And you know, we pay his salary, but he doesn't pay me to say most of the stuff I said. But it's always the good comeback because, write that down, the great comeback because everybody is always asking, what are you doing? And to be able to pour out like water, all of the great things that we're doing here at Akron Public School. One of the things that he's very masterful at articulating is, there are many challenges that our students face. And we can't minimize those because they're very real. But at the same time, he always emphasizes, we can't make those our excuses. And so this is why we have so many programs, because we understand that it's not a one-size-fits-all. There was other people there from Department of Jobs and Family Services, looking at employment opportunities and how do we mediate some of the challenges, you know, because some of the images that we see portrayed about African-American males really does impede their opportunities to enter job opportunities, training opportunities. How do we set the stage so those opportunities are open to them? Also looking at, from a juvenile court standpoint, to understand none of our children should be thrown away. And so they have a reclaim program. You know, it sounds good to bound over children into adult systems, particularly when we see them doing hainous stuff. But to say, to work so that there are programs that can mediate that before that becomes a last alternative. And finally, to look at community policing and the relationship between the community and police officers, particularly in light of what we see going on across the country. The understanding that we need to work together and work with our young people. Where there are bad officers, we need to rid ourselves of it. But we have much work to do in teaching our young people how to respect authority. And we have to be intentional about that, but at the same time, we must ask authority to also respect them. And so it's a mutual piece. But overall, I think the city plans to identify of those six, three major areas to proceed and make that their focal point. The second thing that I attended over this week was a community dialogue at the Burning Bush hosted by a number of clergy, along with Councilwoman Tiara Rosie Samples. The community came together to talk about some of the recent events, recent to some, but many, it's an everyday occurrence, I believe. At least they sense that is the case. And feeling like they don't have place and that they really, they don't matter, particularly African-American males. You know, we didn't solve a whole lot, but I think it's so important that we continue to have these open candid dialogues about issues of race and how it gets in the way of how giving some of our young people a fair chance. And to have that, and when I say candid, you know, everybody's interpretation is civility is different. I'm very passionate and that can be interpreted at times as being not very simple, when in fact, it's not that, it's my passion. And so people's nerves are very frayed, people are hurting, but I think conversations like the one I attended are very critical in helping to start the healing process and begin the process of reconciliation. And so I was nicely down there, and of course, they always ask me, so what is Akron Public Schools doing? You know, and we continue to emphasize that education is a partnership. It's not something you do in a vacuum. You know, they don't come to us and then they just fall apart. You know, we're taking them from communities where we as communities have failed to stand in the stead we ought to, to ensure that some of the things that they're having to experience, like violence, injustice, lack of access and opportunities to plethora of things, this is the result. So we are fighting sometimes an uphill battle, but nonetheless, we continue to fight. Well, I just say, I was glad to be a part of that conversation and hope to be a part of many more. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. I appreciate that very much. Patrick?
I'd just like to add on to what Veronica said. I had the pleasure of moving my office this weekend, and while I was doing that, yesterday I was, well, another guy in my office said, did you hear that chanting? It sounded like chanting. Well, there was a demonstration in front of the Akron Police Department, and it was basically to address concerns, the public's concerns about the police-civilian relationship as well as race relations. And they had a short article in the Beacon Journal about it, and I read that, and it was just, I was very happy and proud that our citizens are doing things like the meetings that Veronica attended and this demonstration. It was peaceful. It wasn't burning cars and looting businesses and the things that give people that have a passion a bad name because they couple passion with breaking the law because they feel they're entitled to that. So I was very proud to see that that occurred. We had a similar demonstration in Cleveland shortly after the decision on the Ferguson indictment came out. And it made me feel good that our people, and obviously there were kids at this demonstration yesterday down by the Akron Police Department, and I'm sure they're Akron Public Schools students. So it's nice to see role modeling of how to get change, as we had seen in the past with Martin Luther King and others, that, and I think his saying, and I'll be, if I can remember it, "Nonviolence is the sword that heals," I believe is the saying. And so I was just very glad to see that. I wanted to add that to Veronica's statement.
Yeah, just, I actually was at the same, My Brother's Keeper with Veronica, and I think Lisa was there as well. But yeah, just some observations from that. First thing, I'm asked all the time, what's Akron Public Schools doing? I think the question more is, what aren't we doing? And I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but, and sort of dovetail that with Business Advisory Council, there's a lot of work on, you know, we're talking career to cradle and career tech and things of that nature. So that's something that we continue to evolve to try to get students passionate and give them a reason to be in school and stay in school and take the things that may bore them to death are required to get a diploma. Thought it was interesting, I did point it out there, and I was given some information afterwards, but we, at that program, we didn't talk a lot about the cradle to preschool, which I think is a huge gap in the conversation, part of the conversation that needs to be made more prevalent, talk more about it within Akron, within everywhere. I mean, you can use an analogy to poor rural kids in the same, you know, same sentence, the same conversation, if you will. It's more, it has a lot to do with poverty. Obviously, there's things with race that go into play as well, but you know, as far as the cradle to, when a kid comes to their public school, we need as a community to come together more and talk about that more. And I, like I said, I was pointing in a couple of directions. One of a program that the county's running called First Things First, if my memory is correct, that's what it was called, and something's been started. I've got some ideas, and I think I might try to get involved with that as well. But very good program, good start. I hope that's not the end of it.
Yeah, one of the things, and we're going to talk about it today, so I'm so excited always when we get to talk about nutrition, with early head start programs, we're working with women moms while the kids are still in the belly. Just you can never underestimate the importance of proper nutrition and all of those good things that really set a child on an upward trajectory once they dart the world. So that was good stuff.
I do want to point out, we have some lovely individuals behind us here who are being incredibly good. So thank you guys for being in there. That's where we're going to get to, really soon, okay? Yes, we're being so good. Okay, do we have anyone here from Bookto? Oh, wonderful. We are going to do our communications and recognitions now, and our first recognition is for the City Series win by the Bookto football team. And if you'd like to come up a second. This is one of my favorite things to do, is to recognize the City Series champions. Can you tell us a little bit about your, the team this year?
We weren't expecting to be, of course, we always expect to be good, but then as the time went on, kids got better, they worked harder. And our grades, the big thing to us as coaches, it excites us, is the grades went up. They're not where we want them to be, and a lot of times, they're not where they need to be. But it's a point of emphasis that we, that we put on the kids, and we have a study table, and we're, now we're working with the kids for the ACT. I mean, it's just, it's just grades, grades, grades.
Well, grades, 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 and 6-0 in the city, and the city is a great accomplishment. So thank you so much for coming today. Please give us a round of applause.
What's your name?
Henry Lewis.
So thank you, Ms. Natalie.
And you wanted assistant coaches?
Yes, I wanted assistant.
And Henry, you were teaching at Bookto.
I was teaching 15 years at Bookto and I just retired. And I do miss the kids.
So you're awarding the City Series, you won what?
The football championship.
Very good. I'm sorry, did I not say?
That's good.
Okay. And next, I have from the Firestone Band, we are going to recognize their placement in the, with a superior rating with OMEA, and Kate Ferguson is going to come up and she's going to tell us a little bit about the band. Those of you who haven't met Kate, she's our new band director for Firestone High School, so welcome her.
She doesn't want to stand in front of dolls because she's grading them all. It's not about me, really, it's about them. I did bring some students and our assistant band director, this is Bernie Williams, our assistant band director, as well as our, as well as our drum majors, Montana Hollis, Jacob Mansfield, and Annika Chura. Would you like to tell them anything? I just wanted to say that we had a great season this year. We placed the highest we've ever placed in Bands of America competition, which is one of, literally the highest competition we could compete in, and we made it to finals in our regional, which was something Firestone's never done before. And none of what we would have done this season would have been accomplished without Mrs. Ferguson and all of her staff.
You didn't bring any of the hardware with you.
Probably because it wouldn't fit.
There are so many trophies that they won. Anything, we're going to have to build onto the building just for the trophy. Anything else you guys want to share?
So did you have to coordinate before a year came, or is that a coincidence?
We tried to. But yeah.
It still looks matchy to me.
Well, I have a certificate here that we signed, and it's a award of excellence for to go along with the hardware. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You can shake your mom.
Did you get pictures, Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Can I get a picture with that kid that's tall?
I'm a girl's too.
Please, for me?
As a condition of my own right.
Thank you. Now, finally, in all of their patience, we have a presentation on digital learning. And I'd like to introduce Mary Adams and Marcia Eubright, is that how I sound? Marcie, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to do a little introduction before we get started. As everyone around the table knows, we've been making significant investment in our technology infrastructure over the past two years, to make sure that our students are in the learning environments that match the 21st century skills needed in today's workforce. As our technology services, our technology services department installed upgrades our infrastructure, they also work hand in hand with our curriculum and instruction division to implement classroom-based digital learning strategy. The purpose of, the purpose of today's presentation is to highlight some of our successful digital learning initiatives and share some of the vast 24/7 resources available to our faculty, student, family. I would like to introduce two of the staff members from our technology services department who will share this important update with us tonight. Mary Adams, Director of Technology Services, and Marcie Eubright, Instructor of Technology Specials.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Mary Adams. First slide I'm going to show you is the one you've all seen many times before, but as you can see, we're listed in the foundation of the district focus. We are focusing today on the learning conditions on Focus Area 2 and 3. And we are expanding, what we're trying to do is expand learning opportunities for K-12. And we're doing it with a lot of support from the district and the board members, because without the financial support, it'd be really tough to do. We're going to talk a little bit, well, today I have these wonderful young people from our district, and they're going to be demonstrating some of the technologies that they're currently using in the classrooms. At the, I do have a presentation at the table, and if you want to take one when you need that, that's fine. At the end of the presentation, there's a listing showing other opportunities that we have in the district that we're not going to go into today, but at least you can take a look at them and see what we have. I am going to show you our district portal. It's called APS Learns, and these are all the applications district-wide that students are able to use from home, at school. Some are just for staff members, some are just for teachers, and the rest are for students. These are our software applications. The next link shows you the links that they can get to. And we also have testing and technology preparation, so teaches them a little bit about how to use the technology and getting them ready to take tests. Now we're going to turn it over to our wonderful children. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we are so lucky because we have three students from Piper Elementary, along with their teacher. And I've asked each one of them, some of the things that they use at school, as far as their digital learning goes, and they gave me a list. And could I get Nicholas, can you stand up for us, please? Nicholas uses the APS Portal that you just saw. He also uses his Envision Math Online, Benchmark Literacy, which is his language arts books and resources, and he also uses Google Docs. Can you come on for me? Okay. Come over here. All right, thank you. And I also found out before we started today that he's also one of our gifted delivery service students from Piper, so he goes online and receives instruction for his gifted enrichment program for math. Is that what you told me? Okay, great. So I'm going to bring up your Google presentation before you all came in today. He sat down, signed into his portal, pulled up his Google account, and I asked him to share with me some things that he's been doing in Google. So he did. And let me see, I got to find it now, too. And landforms, is that the one I'm looking at, Nicholas?
That's the presentation.
Okay. All right, we'll look at that one first. So can you, I want to show loads up here, can you tell me a little bit about what you've been doing here?
Well, I've been doing landforms, which is what we're doing in the science. And I've got mountains, valleys, and I'm almost finished with, I don't think I'm finished.
Start that one.
And then at the bottom, there's very, I think.
Okay. So is this what you've been learning about in class?
This is for science.
Oh, this is for science? So how long did it take you to do all this?
It took about, I don't know, like 15 or 20.
Wow, that's pretty good. If you need some presentation maker, we've got one right here. All right, any questions for Nicholas, the one he's been working on?
So Nicholas, what do you like most about working with technology?
Well, I just like to, I just like to have like, I just go on, I just make, present on Google Docs, I just make, I just like to make like, I just like type in stuff and then I let, and then I let other people see it. I really like like putting in the pictures and stuff like that.
Because you can share it with other people, and they can look at it and give you feedback or help you work on it, too. Did you know that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Our next student is Cornelius. Unfortunately, Cornelius couldn't make it tonight, so the part of Cornelius is going to be played by his teacher, Taki Orman. And she's been working really great with her kids. Jacob was one of the first people that, we gave the first sort of demo Chromebook cart before we bought them district-wide. I asked her to take them, enter her class, and let her kids go crazy and use them, and then tell us what she thought, and she loved it. And that was, she gave us a lot of great feedback and positive aspects about that. So she's been using those Chromebooks with the kids for a while. And so she's going to talk about what Cornelius uses with Benchmark, and I believe I have Cornelius signed in here someplace. Benchmark Literacy.
This is a new system that we, our new adoption for our English Language Arts, and what the students are able to do then is they are able to sign in, they are able to click on assignments, which allows us to give them assignments that are at their Just Write level. And we are able to assign them books, we are able to assign them, we're working on realistic fiction stories. So we're able to assign them realistic fiction stories for them to take a look at in their assignments, so that they can read it and have a level of which to refer to, to get the inspiration for their writing, as well as for all of the classwork that they do.
And inside the library?
It's actually in the assignments. The library has all the books that they can access, but the assignments we have.
And I'm probably getting something wrong to do with everything. But is this where they have all their books, though? Is that in the library?
Yeah.
Okay. And can they make like shelves and their favorite books?
They can.
And they can keep track of them and read them as they like?
They can.
All these different online books are available for them to check out? Great. Thank you, Cornelius. Okay, and next we have Mirabella Sutchu. Said that, right? Can you stand up, Mirabella? Mirabella has been using a lot of the same programs, too, but she, I asked her to talk tonight about the math program that she uses in class, and so I'm going to bring that one up for her. And that is called Envision, that is our K-5 math adoption. And what would you like, what would you want me to click on? Let me tell me.
Click on the two.
Click on the two.
I don't see it. All right, here. Yes, two, thank you. And then what?
And like, and math facts. Okay, so that's a game where you can practice all your pluses and minuses, the times and division. And click X. And then this is also where your teacher can assign you all of the math tests that you take if you need to take a retest. So the Topic 5 retest, which I didn't have to take. So it's just like a program where your teacher can instead of just writing it on paper, you can do it on the computer.
I'm just answering something, I'm not looking, guys. So you just answer and then you go to the next question?
Yeah.
And then when you're done, you can stop and does that send those results to your teacher, then?
No.
If you click on, if you, go ahead on and just stop test. If I can cut it, Mirabella, I'm sorry. If you click on Done, up at the very top, see where there's a to-do list and then there's Done?
Okay.
You actually have a record of all of Mirabella's tests, and you'll see that she doesn't very often miss. And if you click on that Topic 5 test, it'll actually show you the results, which allows you to know what exactly it was.
Do you look there to see how you've done on stuff?
There's one red X up there, wasn't it?
We have any questions for Mirabella and her math?
I have a comment.
Sure.
She's very well articulate. And I love that, I love the way you speak and the work that you're doing, so please keep it up.
I had to click on the button that said Explore. What does this screen do for you, Mirabella?
Well, it's where your teacher can put up a video to tell about what you're learning. And I think that's it.
Thank you, good job. So our next three students are the Sasha brothers. They are the sons of our very own Christie Sasha, who's one of our district coaches, and all three of her sons attend Akron Public Schools. And so she willingly allowed us to use them this evening to call them over. And I don't know, they were all promised twins since after they leave here, so. So we're going to start with Luke, and I'm going to bring up, Luke is letting us look at his Home Access Center, which is, you want to stand up, Luke, and tell us a little bit about it? Luke, you might need to log back in, look like they kicked us out. Can you come on back there?
So Home Access is a place where you can check all your grades, interim scores, your schedule for classes, and like, make sure not to go to grades because that'll show your interims in your report cards. Like, you go to.
Does your mom look at it?
Yeah. So you go to Classes, and then you could click on Schedule or Classwork. You could see if you're missing assignments, or if you did bad on any of them. Like, here, I missed two points on them. And so this one, I have a couple that aren't turned in like that. And so you could check, and your teacher like, it's like a link to the grades, but you can't get on the grades. Like, you could just, like, you could read the topic, like, this is the class, and then you could see your percentage, like, you gotta sort of like guess the grade by the percentage. So science will probably be like a B, and this will probably be like a B+. So like, that's pretty much it. But we have this thing called Advisory Day at our school. And in the morning, we go to this advisory where we have a learning coach, just watch us until school starts. And then you could like, then we go to our learning coach's classroom and we like set goals with Home Access, like, see how you could keep this grade, how you could like make it better. Like, when you, like, you could say, like, you could set goals for like the next grading period or for the rest of the grading period. Like, say I won an A in Language Arts by the next grading period. So like, you set goals, and then you try to get them. Until, like, one of my goals for Language Arts was to get all my assignments turned in on time. But I sort of failed on that. And then that's pretty much all of it.
It feels like a game to me, like, you're having to check in, make sure everything's there all the time, and watching your points go up. Yeah, that's pretty nice. Any questions about Home Access? I'm really good at that.
What's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is probably math or, um, I don't know.
Great. All right, next up is Sensor. You want to come on up? Yeah, make sure. Does it still have you signed in, or did it kick you out?
Click on Classes.
All right, here, I'll let you do it.
I don't know if it's open.
I think it might have kicked you out. Away from it for too long. So Luke, you're a fifth grader at STEM, correct? Brother and seventh grader at STEM. And you use Blackboard to help you sort of keep on top of your work, and your teacher will make assignments through there, so that's a learning management system. And we asked him to kind of show off how he's using some of that, too. There you go.
So I use Blackboard to like, well, our teachers can send us assignments that we can use and we can, we have to do, and we read what we have to do off of Blackboard. And then we can type up the answers on a Microsoft Word document or on Google Drive and stuff like that. And then we can paste the link into, like, a Dropbox is what we call it. And the teachers can, and we turn it into there, into the Dropbox, and the teachers like check to see if we got it done, and then they grade it. And they can give us feedback, like, on it, like, if we did good or if we missed anything, or what we could do better, or if we did a good job on something.
So do you do this at home or on weekends, too? You go in there and put your work in?
We're supposed to check Blackboard daily.
Okay, so you check it.
To see if we have any other assignments. They can also tell us like what we're going to do the next week. And it has a schedule on it somewhere, and it has a calendar to tell you when things are due.
Does that help keep you organized? I need calendars, too. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So you find your teacher's feedback, do you help them? Yeah. And we can like turn in, we can also do tests, too. And we can like retake them and stuff like that.
All right. So you, can you tell me, tell me when you use Ache. What's this all about?
I use Ache 3000 and after, after school, after school.
After, after school, okay. Do you, is that what you do? How long are you there?
Um, like, half an hour.
And this is what you do while you're there?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a teacher there with you?
Yeah.
All right, well, I've never seen it. You want to show it to me?
This is my teacher's name. And we have a, we have a, um, thing, a teacher presses on it. It's called lesson. And, um, I think this is, this probably, this story is all about cameras. And this.
I don't know if you caught that, but he was over here finagling with the sound. Get it loud enough so you can hear that? Does that help you sound out the words that you don't know?
Yeah.
Do you like using the Ache program?
Yeah.
Do you use it at home any time?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. Anything else you want to tell us about that?
Um, it's a really fun, um, activity. There's like article. This is how it tells about, um, the stuff you're learning. And activity, that's like the things that mostly talk about.
Did you have to, did your teacher show you how to do all this, or did you figure it out on your own?
Um, the teacher helped us to do it.
Doesn't look like it, was it too tough? Was it okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
After reading the, um, thought question. And, um, the rest are kind of like the exact same thing that get others.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's William, right?
Yeah.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Second, all right.
So we have Mirabella, third grader, seventh grader, fifth grader, seventh grader, there's. So some other, you know, digital learning opportunities that we have going on in Akron Public Schools. Thank you guys so much for their, for something. We have that Gifted Delivery, which we talked about, through Moodle and WebEx. We have distance learning opportunities with our college partnerships, video teleconference labs going on. We use Play-Doh for credit recovery, all those online courses that students can get to. You saw the APS portal and the different sort of educational apps that are there. We put things in there that are all K-12 apps. So the students and teachers have one place to go to where they can find all of their resources. One of the common stumbling blocks for these sorts of things is remembering all those URLs or websites and passwords and usernames. And they all have different things for them to go to. So this was really nice that they could capture it all and keep it in one spot. So we've seen this usage expand greatly through the use of the portal. We have our Robis K2 program, talked about Benchmark and Envision, but we also have digits in the middle school, Math Excel in the high school, the M2Y program for our Sped students, Ache 3000, NetTrucker is a safe website search engine students have access to, online books, and our Internet safety courses. All of those things are inside the portal and digitally available for our learners. Any other questions?
What as parents do we do when the technology of these kiddos starts surpassing us? Do we do any parent, what do you mean? Do we have days where we bring the parents in and show them some of this?
Sir, and our schools have taken a lot of advantage of that. And they've had, you know, parent nights where they show them the portal, they show them Home Access Center to help keep them, you know, tuned with what their students are learning. But kids are really intuitive. You know, when we select these programs and look at them, we look for the intuitiveness of it so that they can get in and start using it without a lot of heavy lifting on our end. So when you look at the Benchmark Literacy, five nice big buttons, here's your books, here's your work, very simple. But yeah, the kids are going to fly.
I mean, well, it's going to far surpass me.
Yeah.
And that's okay. I'm sure he surpassed me.
Yeah, I'm sure he has. I mean, they could probably teach me a lot.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there any opportunity for students to teach one another? I know for me, my daughter is very technologically savvy. But she's, with her, she's a lot more patient with her old mom than you'd say an instructor would be. I mean, I think she just relishes the idea of showing me that she, that, what she knows and what I don't know. But it's not as painful.
And I would say our students probably take a lot of efforts in helping each other out because they'll discover and find things out, for example, about Google Docs. I'm sure Nicholas is going to find some cool things in there that he can make with his presentation, and he's going to be telling his classmates about it and vice versa. So yeah, you possibly, as, as Workman, can't possibly deliver every piece of knowledge in that one-way instruction to them. So they're going to have to be collaborators, and that's what we look towards, one of our 21st century skills, too.
Thank you.
Question from Mr. Workman, how difficult is it to keep up with all this? Because I'm lost already. And to keep up with just, you know, you have just, what, five there, maybe 20?
I try and do just one program at a time, and once we've mastered that, then we move on. Because it is, it's very overwhelming. And it's so exciting, though, to have it, and just to see them all excited about logging on to do your presentation and learning. And like you said, they just adapt, they help each other, and I depend on that because they, they will know more than I do.
I think that there is a special sort of magic. Because I will have teachers, I do PD for teachers, and they'll be like, oh my gosh, here's one more thing to learn. But when you get in front of the kids and they sort of sprinkle that excitement about what you're now turning around to show them, then the teacher gets reinforced about it, too. It's like, oh, okay, I do have the ability to do this.
It seems like it will keep their attention as well because they're busy. Keep their minds engaged. Like, they did a great job.
Their presentations felt, all of them are fantastic.
Yes.
And the computers they have, those are the Chrome, what we call the Chrome?
Quick question, one young man said something about, you know, there's expected login seven days a week. Do we have an idea how many kids we have that don't have the ability to log in at home? I mean, maybe, you know, it's not very.
So yeah, I mean, we, there's analytics in the background to see how many students are logging in, how often they may be logging in. I'm not sure that Home Access Center, if it does duration, but you can certainly see how many have ever used it and how many times they may have been on. You know, access issues are always a challenge. You know, we work really closely with the community library, so they're informed about what sort of applications that we're using with students. But we do find a lot of kids have a phone. And all of these, a lot of these things they can get right to on their phone. They can get to their Google Docs and type in right on there. And so there's other, rather than having maybe the hard computer at home. So yeah, there's certainly challenges there. I know a lot of the schools will provide after-school time, you know, during the school time, open up labs for students to come in and do their work.
Is this entire portal, is it smartphone friendly?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be interested in the question that Reverend Walker asked because the young man was talking about how he challenged himself. This is what I've challenged myself to do this year. If you see that or do this semester, if you can see that, where you're kind of lacking, and be able to go there anytime, it's easier to push yourself. But I'd be interested to know if we could track at least quarterly or like one time a semester or grading period, to see if students are checking into that. That'd be very interesting. Not only interesting, but maybe very helpful because there may be some unknown challenges.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
As you're going, these are property of the school or the Chrome? Do they get, they do not get to take them at home, do they?
Not the Chromebooks. If you go to STEM, you are assigned a laptop.
Okay. STEM has laptops.
Yes.
And you get to take that home? But the Chrome's not?
The Chromebooks stay at school. There's a cart, and they plug into the cart every night. And these are good for. And these are good for a day's use. And then usually we just plug them in every evening.
So are the Chromebooks a part of the iProms piece?
No.
No?
No, that's what's saying so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They're very terrible. Yeah, I don't know, I just think that much Christmas there about how the price that we get for them. So we were able to get twice as many devices out there.
You call this a Chromebook versus a laptop? Is it just a...
It's sort of like a combination between your iPad and laptop. So it's halfway, right? So it's got this like whole...
No Microsoft license, yeah, it's just...
Yeah, because I didn't see what the difference was on the Chrome.
I'm actually thinking about getting... It's mostly just from the internet. And there's not a lot of memory and appropriate...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You'd have to something like...
Yeah, you've got... Everything's on the internet.
Yeah.
Leave it on the internet.
You don't need a hard drive. No, you need the internet. You don't need Microsoft Office.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll keep, we'll keep playing all day and learning about technology. It is now time for Deb Volk and Laura Kessler to talk to us about health and wellness policy updates.
Good evening. How are you doing? You've had that wonderful presentation, so I wanted to make this pretty short and sweet. Uh, the first part that you have are the policies that you are talking about tonight. And I'm going to review the care of students with diabetes. This is a mandate law that went into effect. You each have a copy of some information I'm going to give you in a minute regarding this law that went into effect in September of this year. Understand, this is a requirement, this is the policy to start this process. We have been doing diabetic students for years. We know who our diabetic students are. We take care of them through child nutrition and our school nurses. What we're also mandated to do now though is make sure that all staff members have a, come in contact, whether it's a coach, it is a teacher, it is the school principal, it is a child nutrition person other than a menu issue to deal with diabetes. And this is what this plan does. So what I wanted to share with you is one of those wonderful, wonderful tiles you saw. There is atomic learning. And we have put together with Children's Hospital the presentation that you have in front of you on diabetes management. This, uh, will be available through the policy for all staff members to go out online and learn how to manage a student with diabetes. This is the first requirement in doing training. It is, uh, put together by Children's Hospital, who provides our student health aid, you know, network. And this provides the teacher or any staff member the basics, understanding on how to deal with diabetes. It has at the end of it, a post-test in which the person must take it. It's right on line with it as well. It will score it. They must continue to get this score until they get 100. It's not that hard. But the idea is that if students are going on a field trip, they have diabetes, they're doing a wrestling match and they have diabetes. They are in school on a day in which we think that they're having trouble. We all can address this. It is not something that is hard to do. You can truly, if you've ever dealt with diabetes, have a clear understanding of what a student needs very quickly. Your health aides and your RNs that oversee them already know what to do with them. The medication is already, if they bring it to school, are already secured and given to students after, you know, they take their blue post, you know, counts. Or it will travel with them on their particular field trips. One thing we do currently have about 57 students that we truly have prescription for, that has already been turned over to Mr. Biltz, who is turning over any request for a 504 plan that is required. Once a student gives us a prescription that they have diabetes, John will make an offer to the family to put a 504 or a medical plan together for those. Diabetic students are very well managed. It's when they first get there that we want to make sure that we get them well-trained, how to tell us when they're in trouble, how we will deal with it and make sure that they can, um, deal with their diabetes in an effective manner so that we can contact parents if we need to, we can contact EMS if we need to. Most of this is truly already in place. This is just to get it up in line with the policy and the law. So I wanted to share with you, um, the information regarding diabetes. I am handling this right at the moment. Children's Hospital will come in and do any extra training that is needed. They are already ready and waiting for us to put the policy into effect. Do you have any questions?
I do. Uh, by the, the time a teacher gets this?
Yes.
Do they have a certain time period before they have to take the test?
It actually is at the end of the time in which they...
No, I mean, do they have a, a time period? They need to access this and take the test?
Actually, what happens is if you, say your daughter came in with a diabetic, um, diagnosis, you turn it over to the principal. The principal then will contact those teachers and say that your daughter has diabetes and they need to go out and get their test. My hope is, to be honest with you, Mrs. Sims, that every staff member will get this done before the end of the school year. And I'm talking about 3,500 staff members.
So the trigger, you know, is a parent coming in and saying, I need a 504 or a plan?
I have a prescription from the doctor saying my student is diagnosed with diabetes and this is what I need to put into place.
And so it'll be only those school buildings that students...
It could be, yes, I get what your question is. Those students that are housed, say at Bookdale, but I don't have any diabetic to firestone, as an example, may not have that. We are some level, that doesn't work. We actually have students that are in different buildings at different times. Think of your career ed programs, think of your field trips. We're hoping to put this, uh, across district wise.
So what would inhibit you from doing that?
To do what?
From putting it district wide?
It isn't inhibiting it from district wide. That's why it's online and available for teachers to take it online. And we will be, that report of that test comes back to me. And then we will follow up with the principal if we have any other issues.
So what I hear you say is the initial, right? If they have any student in their class, they're going to take it right away?
Yes.
Everybody else, we want to have it required by the end of the year. So even if you don't have a kid in your class now, you might get a kid in your class tomorrow.
We are encouraging you to do it.
But by the end of the year, we would like you to have them to have taken it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so right now in this building, we had some children that were here.
Yes.
Didn't know if they were diabetic or not. They may have been.
Exactly.
So we have juice box, Skittles, gummy fruit, snacks, sugar packets, cake, jar...
Deborah has fruit juke boxes downstairs in her refrigerator. If I realized a student was eating something, I would know it's...
But so if, if we're waiting, that's, okay, no, this is, I'm going to hit this one more time.
Now, understand.
Yeah, it'd be simple to me. I'm thinking, because the little, the young little, the little boy that came in and talked, I mean, a few months back, he was compelling. And he talked about some of the processes he had to go through as a young person, having to do the care for his, um, almost, almost, it was like in secrecy. So, to kind of get past that and to make sure everybody is equipped. I would have known what was going on with him just basically by looking at some of this. Why is it just, is it that simple? Why can't we just have everybody do it?
Actually, all schools...
And say...
...do obtain for their nurses, juice boxes and brand hikers directly from child nutrition, which are already in the clinic, so their child be brought down to them with any kind of issue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not waiting for the coffee out of the bar, that's all I'm saying. I mean, well, before my daughter could get her computer, as still...
Yeah.
She had to sign this paper and mommy had signed it.
I need a physician's...
She couldn't get, she couldn't get her computer to do that.
We need a physician's written order to get it started. The order from a physician tells you the diagnosis and how the plan is to be put in place because every student has a different diagnosis of diabetes as to what they can handle. So he will tell you, Deborah has diabetes, she has this kind of plan together. This is how many carbs she may have at breakfast, how many carbs she has at lunch, how many carbs she may have at dinner. These are what I want done. If her blood glucose goes above this or below this, I have to have a health plan in place under a physician's written order. So some parents are very good. They walk in the first day of school when they enroll and say, my daughter or my son has diabetes, to the principal, they notify us immediately. Other students, I will be honest with you, we don't know. And we will not know until they, if they have a crisis issue and show up at a principal's office, tell their teacher they don't feel good, or a nurse, then we will contact the parent and say, you know, Debbie's in here and she's feeling not really, really good. Is there something you should know? But we cannot service a child with diabetes without a physician's written order because if you don't service them correctly, you can injure the student.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Thelma.
You have to...
I think Rob's just, Mrs. Sims is just asking that, are we going to have all teachers required to do it?
Yes.
Instead of trying to target the teachers related to the students.
Right. The policy does say the teachers that attend the students, but we're going to go for everything that is displaced. But it takes time to, to train for the 500 people.
Yes, sir.
Does that include bus drivers, van drivers? See, I sort of discussed again on...
Yes, it does. They, yes, but this is the issue with bus drivers and van drivers. They cannot transport insulin. We do not have lot boxes to secure the insulin. The student may self-transport. The student may go ahead and say to the bus driver, I'm having a problem. Bus drivers and van drivers can radio in and tell us they're having a problem so that we can deal with it. But they cannot transport medication and they cannot necessarily stop a bus to administrative or administration. The students are not on the bus.
They wear no needles on transport.
They can if the physician orders them to be allowed to transport and self-administer. That is correct.
And what about not the insulin, but, you know?
Again, it's the same thing. We have, we, once we get this in place, we will be coming back with you to make modifications to the other medical requirement policies we have in place because we have to add this part to that. And it will include any kind of other medications that children may self-administer or must have on site. Again, it all starts with a physician's written order.
And then what, what do we have in place for our children? Or what do we have in place for teachers?
Same thing. A teacher more than is welcome to...
Who's diabetic?
To give her information to the health aide and to the principal. And again, you may have to be...
And what about board members?
Reverend Walker, if we're in the building, will take care of it. Now, honestly...
But, but teachers, I was, because I know that something could happen.
Yes.
I remember being in elementary school. We knew when a student at that time went into seizure, epileptic seizure, they would go and get the board, we would quiet ourselves, everybody would move. In fact, the young lady always sat, the young girl sat next to me all the time. We knew to move. They told us if something happened, to put something in a mouth, the appropriate thing if we could. If not, we would move out. Everybody knew that.
Right.
Right from the beginning of class, every school term, we were given instructions. And so everybody knew, they were very sensitive, concerned about that stupid...
But we would treat adult staff members the same way. If I was diabetic and I went to my health aide at my school, whatever, we treat them the same way. We will keep their medication if they so desire and do not want to have it in their room. We would do anything to secure the medication properly. And we have had to make adjustments for staff members who have this particular disease. If they're willing to share it.
Right, they don't have to.
They don't not have to. All right, now I'm turning it over to Laura.
I feel like I'm like the last special. I'm the naked...
Has the pressure.
Okay, all right, good. So I'm here, um, just to kind of do a brief overview. There's four policies related basically to food and nutrition and wellness. They're being revised and there are two new ones. And really, um, in 2006, the board first adopted a wellness policy. At that time, I remember all of the discussions, eventually there will be a federal mandate. Let's do what we can to promote wellness, you know? But eventually there'll be a federal mandate. So in 2010, there was a state Senate Bill 210 that updated our wellness policy, to be in line with what the state adopted. And then out of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, uh, came a federal mandate for USDA to issue nutrition and beverage guidelines for all foods, or nutrition guidelines for all foods and beverages sold to any students in the school. So this goes beyond our cafeterias and our, um, you know, anything in the cafeteria or do the school meal program. This is actually, um, these guidelines, they refer to them as the USDA Smart Snacks in School. And they are, um, effective actually July 1 of 2014. So we've had some beginning discussions already. Deborah's updated it, um, for principals in the, uh, her business affairs manual. And it took a little bit of time to work through the mandate. It's not real cut and dry. The, the ruling is very cut and dry. You have to follow it if you're selling foods to, um, students or beverages to students. But the complicat, it's not a very like, this is good and this is not. It's very complicated, as you can imagine. So, um, we've been working through it. We finally have the guidelines written. ODE has been very forthcoming with providing these summary sheets. If you look at them, these are the summaries. You almost have to be a trained dietitian to figure out some of the things. It's not that easy. But manufacturers are on board. They know what can be sold. If you go to Fredo Lay, they can tell you, you can sell these 10 items. If you go to, you know, a beverage company, Coke, they know what can be sold. This is a national federal mandate. So it's not anymore just Ohio does this and, you know, Wisconsin does this. So they're all of the manufacturers, it's taking some time, but they're coming out with products every day. So the key thing to remember, I guess, is all of the revisions to the policies, there's really not a lot of content, content change otherwise than getting in alignment with these federal mandates. And so what we're talking about is, um, food and beverages being sold to students during the school day. So sold. So events where you have treats or a pizza party, or you want to reward someone or you have a cookie tray for award assembly, you're giving it away. The teachers, the building, whatever. That's not covered by these, by this, okay? You have to be selling it. So not anything like parties or, you know, anything of that, that's not covered. You can do whatever you want in the teacher's lounge. You can sell our career ed programs, can sell whatever they want to adults, to staff members because that's being sold to adults and staff members, not, um, students. And then during the school day, the school day is, um, from midnight the night before. So it covers all those morning sales, okay? They, they, they identified the school day in the legislation as midnight the night before to 30 minutes after the school day ends. So 30 minutes, if they can wait and sell pizza 30 minutes or if they can find pizza, Domino's, Pizza Hut, they all have pizzas now that are school compliant. They don't want to lose the sales. So it's just a matter of time to either find that, or they can wait 30 minutes and do it at the end of the school day. Or evening sporting events, concessions, those are all okay. You can sell to students or adults there because it's that period of after-school to midnight. It's not easy. I know it's not easy for everyone. There's a lot of child nutrition programs that are struggling with it. We took, a few years back, we took a step back and we don't sell a lot of extra items. We really sell what's part of the meal program. We want to, the kids to eat the meal. So, um, you know, probably the biggest, um, issue here are the vending machines and the, um, the, the career ed programs. The career ed programs, um, you know, they've come a long way. They're looking at things, a lot of them are already in compliance. You know, it's just a matter of, of finding those other items that they could still sell that are going to meet the regulations. And, um, as we go out, we are having child nutrition, our state audit in January. We have not been notified of the schools yet and I'm waiting on that. But they will be out visiting six schools. So in preparation of that, we are visiting all of these buildings. And we are trying to address with the people involved and just educate them of this. So we have provided this handout to career ed teachers or to other people trying to, um, get the word out. Hopefully with the approval of the, um, board revisions, then, and the policies, then, um, you know, we can further educate the rest of, um, the district. There is a nice, um, tool online, Community Alliance of Healthier Generation. They can put the, um, information right in and it'll either tell you, yes, it's compliant or no. So there's a lot of resources. Any questions? Now that's not quick and dirty of it. I may have the written information.
I'm just curious, how's it affect the dining rooms of the food, our, you know, culinary programs that feed adults?
If they feed adults, that's fine.
They go to Garfield.
They go to Garfield, you can, they can sell. You can sell, they can fit. Part in on the next generation. They, uh, if, if the sales are to adults and that is where, and a lot of the career ed program they have, they're taking it into the Kenmore, they're looking for those avenues to, um, keep their programs viable. And they know that's a resource for them.
The Decca stores at him, the sort of...
Decca stores, there's a lot of products out there. And, and we're, we're probably, you know, 75, 80% of the way there already. Because we had a wellness policy already, because we had Senate Bill 210 in Ohio,[1767.14] we've already been talking about this for eight, nine, 10 years. So we are almost faced in it. The federal regulation, what Senate Bill 210, they weren't that far off. It's just like taking the final step. But yeah, you can sell to students, I mean, sell to adults, any, anything.
I believe in Nora, one of those schools that had, I know they have culinary. But I had someone, they took me in there and I was able to see that here's what they were giving to the administration, the adults. But here were the other foods that they were only selling to the kids and they're gonna sell to them. So it's like, this can be sold to the student, this can be sold to the adults.
And that's, and I recognize that as that teacher making a really good effort because that's hard to do. And it's hard to change your thinking and your program. So, I mean, we really appreciate, there are another, I think it was the book sheet. Some of them are just reducing their portions. You might not be able to serve as large of a portion. You, you know, cut down your portion, sell it a little bit less, still be able to serve something to the students that falls within the guidelines. So we're trying to address it, you know, be sensitive that they're, you know, raising money to support their students and programs. And hopefully, like I said, a lot more resources will come out of it.
So the Ohio guidelines were somewhat less restrictive than the federal that are now taking over. Is that where we are?
The Ohio was, the beverages are very similar. And yes, the federal are just a little bit more strict in a few areas, like whole grain items, 100% whole grain things, that there was a little bit of leeway in the, in the state. But they're very, very similar.
So it's not that big of a change as much as?
No, it's not, except that because, like for us now in our audit, this is USDA now. So now when they come into our buildings, they will look for this. They'll look at all foods now on campus. Where before, Ohio was doing it, but there wasn't a federal mandate. So now we know, if like, when we're there and we see things come in the cafeteria to east that we didn't sell, our state auditors are gonna go look where that came from too. Because if the kids have it in the building, now that there's a federal awareness, a federal mandate, then they're gonna know to look for those items too. So our, what I'm saying is, we're gonna be regulated more on it now. Before, we were, there was an awareness and the information was there, but there was really no accountability to it.
Any idea?
So they, 50% of the people were following. And now we're up to 75 to 90.
How much more work will that be for you all that do the dietary stuff? Is it gonna be, or you don't know yet because it hasn't happened?
Well, no, it's, it's just a ma-, it's just trying to educate, you know, the educators and try to work with them to figure out. Like we had calls already in August about the pizza. We tried to direct them to the right, you know, Domino's has another pizza, Pizza Hut has another pizza. Just have to sell. If they're gonna be doing it during the school day, what's considered a school day has to be the compliant one. So.
A compliant pizza. That has different ingredients.
It's gonna be lower sodium, lower fat, no ingredients, basically.
All whole grain.
So in essence, when you walk in the building, you're gonna have a search warrant, looking for those.
You gotta go where they say adult sales only.
This is contraband. He has a hostess tweeting. This is contraband.
You know, again, face it in. I don't anticipate a lot more work, but it is really highly regulated now. And I absolutely know that our January audit, they're going to be looking for it. So we're just trying to address it. Any other questions?
This is a serious matter and I'm so happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as you said, those lists of those new things that you were talking about, light sheets and all those other items that do fit in the case and meet the requirement for our students. Is, will be a list of those things? Or do you have a list of those things?
Well, we have, we're aware, you know, for the items that we sell. The Alliance for Healthier Generation has taken this on and has a tool online. And there is a web link, and I think it's on the Smart Snap. And you can search by manufacturer, by brand, or by some different things in the grade levels and you can find. And they're starting to get national manufacturer resources.
And the reason why I'm asking is, we have our children in school. But for me, for a church or a faith community, if you're having those things in school and they're meeting those kind of requirements and you can filter some of those things in, in your faith community, you're, you know, you're helping them.
You're helping them, helping a lot.
They've already got, you're getting it there.
Right.
You're looking at churning things, particularly in our faith community where we, we eat a lot. We have activities after church to keep it alive. And so we're trying to get more more green, more boiled, or baked food. More wheat versus bread.
Items, we're trying to make a conscious effort of cutting back on certain things so that people know you can eat healthy, even in church, in your faith community. We're doing that in the schools and we're encouraging our children to. Plus it changes the taste buds and other kinds of things too, too. So we're augmenting, augmenting. So if we had that kind of list, those are things that we can invest in and look at. They, you know, these are things that we can do that are less sodium and less fat and less, etc.
I would, I would say that Alliance for Healthier Generation is probably the best resource for that.
I'm gonna go like this. There's a tweet here.
The order is getting real. Okay. Moving on, we're going to move for approval of the meeting minutes from November 24.
So moved.
Any questions or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Yes. Superintendent's recommendations.
I have before me for your consideration, 47 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval. So, second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments about personnel? We do have many retirements listed here. I want to thank all of those people for their faithful service to Akron Public Schools and students of Akron. I also, I know the superintendent was gonna mention we did suffer a loss in our, our community of one of our bus drivers. So we want to acknowledge that and give our greatest sympathy to his family as well. Any other questions come? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Uh, yes, but abstaining from item 44 and item 45.
Ms. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention is Mrs. Mansfield. Item number 47 is the death of John R. Paul, bus driver, for 20 years for the Akron Board of Education. Madam President, next I have before me for your consideration, one motion and five resolution, resolutions on the consent agenda. And I believe Mrs. Sims will have comments on item number five. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval. So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Mrs. Sims?
I'm just wanting to say how excited I am about our taking on some, a planning preparations for the farm to school. I think it's very consistent with what we're talking about here. Changing the habits of young folks is very difficult. Twice as hard for grown people. But I think the farm to school program affords that opportunity to examine food for young folks, almost from a vanity standpoint, that incentivize, why does she eat better? You know, you know, you can, you know, young folks want to have, guys in particular, muscles, nice, good-looking muscles. To know that you can accomplish this through kale and other kind of greens. Girls and their complexion and hair, knowing there's a direct correlation between that and food. Most importantly, I like the aspect that it's teaching, talking about buying local. When we start talking about buying local, we're also talking about opportunities to grow local. And we know we're growing our own food for a poor household. It really helps to extend their limited resources and they can start to allocate those to other places. So I'm excited about the farm to school program. It's so, it's so timed. You know, I was telling, that Ms. Williams at the, while I was in Columbus, I was tasting some of the food. It was beautiful. But, you know, really nice eye candy, but it doesn't always taste good because, you know, most of what the food we're accustomed to is processed. About 85% of that in our country is about processed. So people aren't really used to tasting and eating real food. So that's a process. But when they're engaged, learning how to grow it, prepare it, and eat it, it changes the whole dynamic. So I'm really excited about farm to school. I'm hopeful and I'm sure that'll happen because it's such a community-thinking body that will be able to engage some of the other folks who are involved in local school, who do what you were talking about earlier. Extend, I mean, extend what they're learning in this environment in their home and community environments. There are, there are organizations in Akron, Ohio, just like Hattie, who are teaching sustainability and teaching kids over the summer and all throughout the year, how to eat better, how to grow and prepare good foods. And so I foresee that in planning. So I'm excited for Proust and for Schumacher and Helen Arno. You know, Schumacher already has a teaching garden over there. Sponsored by Soma and I believe the Heart Association. We're really trying to work across, you know, community, across parent community. I go back, so I'm just, across CLC, Southern Food Policy Coalition and helping to gather gardens there. So it's a grand opportunity. And right in that vicinity with Helen Arno, I know Lesco Akron is working with the housing development across the street. So they're doing a lot of good stuff. So the partnership is gonna be wonderful. So thank you. If I seem a little excited. And Juvenile Court. Yeah, working with Juvenile Court over at their location. They started a garden. Excited about working with them again this year. So we're, it's all about the food. I definitely believe, and I believe everything in me, if you change the way people eat, you'll change the way they think. You know, most of the food they eat today is very toxic, being processed. Sugar depresses the system. When they start getting food that lived before in their systems, it'll change the game. That's what I believe. That's my truth and I'm sticking with it.
I think she's excited.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Question on item six. I noticed there was no bids on, on that item. And I guess I just need clarification. Was this a replacement of an emergency generator or emergency replacement of the generator?
It's a replacement of the emergency generator for the thing. And we sent it out for a bid. We got the one bid and four.
Nobody else bid on it?
No. And, and we've been searching around and we went through engineering to have a detailed spec to make sure. And it'll also increase the, well, it has to do with the transfer switch with the, or the, or the transfer switch.
Thank you.
I had a question, the same thing, and Tim clarified one thing, but, and I thought, when I read over some of the materials on it, was it initially an attempt to repair and we decided that wouldn't work? And I'm wondering why. So the bait and switch from Spielman or?
Yeah, the, we initially had, wanted, had a quote to try to repair the device. But unfortunately, when we got into it, the parts that needed to replace were no longer made anymore. And to try to get them specially made was just not cost-effective to do that.
Who was supposed to do the repair? Was it Spielman or was it someone else?
Uh, I forgot the name, but it was somebody else.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I did want to also mention, I know Reverend Walker, I don't remember if you did that when we were in Baltimore, but a couple of years back, we went and saw the farm out in the Baltimore schools and how they use that in their school program. And we've been excited about it ever since. So I know when Mrs. Braun was here and she works with Juvenile Court now, how excited. So I'm also thrilled to see it getting this grant. Can't wait to see it for two years. I have grand ideas for what we need to do.
And we have chickens on the top pad. I can just imagine chickens.
Oh, chickens.
I'm just saying, that's the part.
I want chickens at my house and I can't get chickens at my house. My husband and I love. All right, roll call.
Can I just throw something else in? And Veronica here didn't leave much for the rest of us, but I'm excited to not to take away, because you said it way better than I would have. I was just gonna throw in a comment that I'm excited. I'm excited for these three elementaries. And I love the comment that, you know, we're, you know, and certainly not to take away from anything that child nutrition has been doing and the grants that it has received and the efforts that it's already made that have been phenomenal, just that I've learned about in the three years I've been on the board. But to see us keep going and to see us set a goal that will extend this opportunity to hopefully at some point all of our students at the same time. And the emphasis on local and Veronica's passion is well-placed, I believe. What you say, and I know that we both work on similar efforts outside of this board for local, healthy, sustainable foods and getting those incorporated into as many places as possible. And certainly Veronica to a much greater extent than myself. But to the extent that I, just Reverend Walker's point had me thinking and to the extent that we are sort of experts in this field or have a stronger foothold than those organizations that might not have any at all, I think it would be great to have those collaborations and those partnerships. And, and we do have demonstration kitchens around town even, you know, with the Akron Kent Regional Food Bank. And people that are also trying to make inroads and do similar things. And it would be great if we could get in with them and say, look, you know, we may not have, we may not be the experts, we may not have a lot of expertise, but to the extent that we, you know, you can jump on with what we're doing and the faith community and the food bank's efforts to try and get out more fresh produce and teach people how to use that if we could all sort of work together. I think anytime we find a way to collaborate that way, I think we would certainly support that and applaud those efforts as well. So I'm really excited too. I think it's a, I think it's another step in the right direction.
One sideline to this particular grant is it also supports Akron Transport, which means that students will be walking to the gardens over at the zoo. So therefore, it also means our Safe House to School initiative. So we'll be able to use some of that training as well with the kids to how to safely walk from their school to that location.
Yeah, and that, you know, what I shared earlier today, and this is why I'm kind of reiterating what Patrick is saying about we're excited about the potential partnerships because that is already, that's happening in some of the local communities. And it's about sustainability. It's, it's when they're out from summer, one of the things we talk about is they're out so long and we're always doing kind of some remedial stuff just to get them restarted, to start school all over again. But in the communities around the city, they're doing this over summer. This is the work that these organizations are doing. So collaborating with them to keep that momentum and keep them engaged around growing, preparing, eating good food is gonna be a win-win. So that's what I'm excited about, the planning grant, what is potential to kind of be far-reaching and impacting those communities of students, most of the students. The percentage of kids are free of reduced lunch. Those are the people, those are the kids we're talking about that don't have access to fresh fruits and vegetables, who don't really know, they believe milk comes from a carton. So, you know, changing what their understanding is. And really, one of our biggest, you know, everybody eats, nobody really talks about. This is like that big elephant in the room. But getting young folks interested in agriculture. I mean, that's a, that is like a, kind of going down the wayside. So what are we gonna do? How are we gonna eat? And so I think this, this allows us that opportunity to go.
Okay, roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
And next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration, 12 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? On business affairs. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.[1754.78]
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
I am still working on a report that I'll give in January after a winter break on our facility plan. And I'll probably at that time address, give the board some information on buildings that are still under 350 students in terms of population, and also talk about our footprint based on the projections in terms of school population. I know I've had our student enrollment geocoded with Cropper GIS, and we'll have some, you know, information to share with the board in terms of scope of our facility project moving forward, and then how to shrink our footprint based on what our enrollment projections are going to show us. So I'll continue to work on that, and we'll have some information for you all to look at in January.
And I was very pleased with the FIFO community. You know, that's one of our buildings. But yet, they also were using the same tools that other students were using. And even though the physical plant may not be up to par to some of our newer buildings, they were excelling in our gifted and in our digital, for lack of ministry, lack of the other term, for our students. So that was, you know, really encouraging to see that. So we'll be looking with great anticipation to your recommendations.
There was no lack in that term.
Spot on. Feel?
All right, thank you.
All right. Brevity is going to be the theme of the President's Report today in light of the late hour. And I just wanted to thank the board and the administration. It's our last regular scheduled meeting of 2014. It's hard to believe. So I wanted to thank everyone for the year. It's hard to start doing year-end stuff. I just, I can't believe, I feel like we should have a top 10 countdown of some sort. But I would urge the board to please get back to Mr. Alexander and I, even if you briefly told us, hey, I want to stay right where I am. It's a crazy month, so please email us, one of us, both of us, and let us know, hey, I, you know, really love the Garfield Cluster, please don't take me out of there. Or I have to stay on policy because my life is just not complete without it, whatever that is. Please let us know, so that we don't make a decision that upsets anyone's sensibilities on those things. I did ask, I sent an email earlier today. It wasn't very prompt, so I apologize for that, because I'm not sure if all of you have seen it. We did discuss with the superintendent the possibility of a retreat before our first regularly scheduled meeting in January, perhaps the seventh. So if you all can get back to us on if that evening would work for a retreat, that would be great as well.
What is this?
It's a Wednesday evening. So take a look at that. We don't, I don't need to have your answer right this second, but that is all I would like to say, because I know Mr. Pendleton has something to share with us.
What time are you proposing that retreat?
Right now, we're asking for 5:30, just so it's regular board time, so people can get off work. We could start at five. If anyone, if we can all get here at that hour, start a little bit earlier. That would be even better right now. All right.
All right. Just about 15 slides right along. This is just a quick introduction to our new financial reports. We've been busy in the Treasurer's Office, really getting to know people and find out what similarities they're looking for as we talk about budget and the size and scope of Akron, what's important, and talking the same language. Is what I'm finding is probably one of my number-one goals, is finding budget reports, both to the board and to the staff. That looks familiar on a regular basis. So with the superintendent's help, we're going to be ready to go in January with our budget meetings with the directors, and we're all going to be using the same format, which we're not now. And then, as you get to learn my process with the five-year forecast, one of the things that I wanted to do is replace the monthly reports that you're approving with a format that's similar to the five-year forecast. So you've received that email. I'm not going to go through that, you know, just page down to the very last slide, which I know I highlighted in my email. And as our Finance Committee looks at the board policy for cash reserve, I just wanted to bring up that chart to put in perspective that while we do have a decent cash balance on the book, this is what this year and next year's cash flow looks like month to month. So when you look at Pendleton's forecast in terms of what we pay in salaries and what we get in revenues, and you see the green lines embedded down in the bottom, but if we were to approve a 10% cash reserve policy, which is very respectable, you kind of see where we're at in January and June, and why it's so important for us to manage to that cash reserve policy. So that, we have not approved a cash reserve policy yet, but I just wanted you to see what that will look like in the future, kind of the discussion points around that. The other document, just to highlight, is the reconciliation. And there's a lot of numbers on this screen. Apologize. On your left-hand side is our book balance. That's what we keep in unis. On the right-hand side is our bank. That's what we have at our various financial institutions. That's what we have in investments, in CDs. And that's where we collect our interest. That's where we have our petty cash and any bank charges. And there's a lot to glean from this report. One is how proud we are of the Treasurer's Office staff to be able, for a financial institution, to reconcile $153 million to the penny each month. They do that within a day or two, and long before I ever came to Akron. So we're really proud of what they do for the district. But also, this is a page that we're going to attach to our monthly reports. This should be a good starting point for a board to say, is the Treasurer reconciling them books each month? Because if you don't reconcile, you can't process your transactions. You can't invest your monies properly. You can't determine your cash reserve policy. And so this is kind of that foundation. And I wanted you to become familiar with this. You're not approving it tonight, but to get it in front of you prior to having these approved, probably starting in January. Okay? When you say reserves, that's something new you want to propose, or that's something that we already have in place? Every district has some sort of policy. Some of them are board-approved, some are just in practice. You certainly, remember in our forecast presentation, we talked about how much one-month payroll is, about $12 million. So if you total up 60 days' worth of payroll, which is our largest financial obligation, that's about $24 million. And put that into perspective with 10% of our budget, about $30 million. So it gives the board some management tool to look out into the future, to say, Ryan, I see in January your cash flow is a little tight. Can you explain that? We already had our first question based on these financial reports. Ryan, why are we collecting a little bit more in the first three months of our financial reporting? And it was a good question. It had to do with the state budget. And so hopefully, there's a chart at the top, there's some financial numbers in the middle, and there's a narrative down at the bottom. It will appeal to the masses, and we'll post them on the website, the financial website, so folks can come for those reports.
Just to piggyback on that, I think it's, so as we've had some of the discussions, I think it's important for two, two primary reasons, anyway. One is from a cash flow management perspective, to be able to look out and say, do we have sufficient cash, especially at year-end, to carry over, or to continue to carry over from month to month? That's kind of an obvious one. Do I have enough money in the bank to meet my obligations from month to month? And at year-end, what do I need to have in there? The second reason is I think it helps us to make more fiscally responsible decisions when we're projecting out from a program perspective from year to year, and from our five-year forecast perspective, that, you know, we may have X on our five-year forecast at the end of each year, but if we're going to continue to make program decisions, what's that sort of level that we don't want to dip below? Because $24 million, you know, is that too much cash on hand at the end of the year, and maybe we can do something more? Is that not enough if $12 million is a monthly payroll, and so that's only 60 days' worth of payroll at the end of the year? And it certainly would help people to put, have a perspective as to what, you know, we believe is a good operating reserve to have. And so it's not like we're just sitting on $24 million of cash at the end of the year. There's a reason for that. So at least that's my perspective. I don't know if Tim, if he doesn't think that.
That has to be made so clear, because the first thing that people, $24 million?
Right.
You've got all of our bargaining unit. You've got special requests or those special programs that we want to.
Yes, you certainly don't hold me to that number, because you're right.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying, as an example, because I, you know, I won't hold you to any, any number, but anytime you have any amount, if it was $10 million for somebody, $10 million, the budget, the school district has $10 million, and they're coming to us for a raise or an increase, for them, that's too much money. So however it is displayed, it has to be displayed in a way, presented in a way, like you were saying. That's only X amount of payroll. So if something happens, something unforeseen, we do have a month of payroll that we can pay. We've got that in reserves, and people can see that. Look at your home. Look at other things you might be doing. For me, look at, you know, you're working with your workplace. Do you have any monies in reserve? There's not a whole lot of us that have $10 million somewhere.
Well, I think you hit, you hit it on the head. If we have $10 million, and our payroll obligation is $12, are you giving up your paycheck for the month?
Right. But you've got to be clear with people so they know, that's where that is, and that's what we're talking about. Look forward, before thinking, because otherwise, people are saying, that's $10 million, I'm not even thinking about. It's not the person who's getting the salary. It's the people out there in the general community who are seeing that $10 million. And the person who's going to get the salary, yes, they want to make sure that it's in reserve, in case something happened. They know they're going to get their paycheck. But that general public that sees that figure, they're like, hey, that's, that's too much. I mean, we did that when we talked about insurance, health insurance. We sat around this table. You came up with, for my personal situation, that's what I have to pay, or work with people. In the county situation, this is what the county's doing. This is what the city's doing. What are we doing? And we got to fight because of the perception is, well, you know, maybe we're not doing enough, because you're coming out of pocket much more than our employees might be doing.
And the positive to that, I think, is that the community was so supportive of us in our last levy request, but I think we owe it to them to be responsible and to say, you know, one more effort on our part to prevent us from finding ourselves in a situation where we're cash poor or cash negative at the end of a fiscal year, this is one more way for us to help safeguard against that and be responsible and say, you know, we recognize that you were supportive, and we're going to be fiscally responsible as a follow-up to that.
Yeah, I think the facts remain the same, but how it's communicated, that, I mean, that's, that's where I think you, well, I guess, is the 10% an arbitrary number? Is that the going rate?
Well, that was going to be my question. Do we have a policy right now? And if it's so, is it, is it below 10%? Or what are we talking about here?
We don't. We don't have a policy.
It's a best-practice study in terms of, do you have 60 days of cash on hand to meet your financial obligations? And there's some studies that we're going to look at.
Are these best practices in general, or best practices for school districts?
School districts and governmental agencies is who, those best practices we're looking at.
And there's no policy yet. It's just a discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to try and show that apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Yeah, because even hearing that was just kind of, made me shake a little.
I think whatever the policy is, I think just by having a policy, just to piggyback on what Patrick said, it tells the community that we want to make that last levy go as far as it can before we ever have to go back and ask for more.
Right. Again, I don't think we're disputing that in any way.
No, I know. But you're asking, how do we explain that to the community?
Yeah.
That's an example. That's an example, verbiage, I guess.
If I'd have walked in at 3:00 AM and turned y'all on, it's, damn, what? $24 million, I probably would have hit the roof. I'm so glad I have you guys displaying.
What is that as a percent to budget?
It's 67%.
Yeah.
And then the question then, since we don't have a policy, and we haven't been doing this before, but yet we have been extremely fiscal, extremely accurate, as you have already demonstrated before you even were hired. Staff was reconciling the budget, every penny, everything is in order, and we didn't have a policy with any X amount. So how did you do before?
And I think I'll go back to Mrs. Sims' comment. I think it may not be a steadfast policy. It may not be a line drawn in the sand. But what it will do is allow us to add clarity to future discussions, future decisions, future programs, to say, you know, Mr. Treasurer, what does that do when we look at this program? And we're going to add that out for a few years. So adding the clarity around exactly what the financial impact is, and then having some threshold, that if it dips below the third or the fourth year out, that it's a good discussion point for us.
And I don't think it has to be steadfast. It's no different than having a budget. I mean, that doesn't mean you can't spend more than what you budgeted, but it's just, you know, it's a goal.
It's a guideline.
Yeah, guideline, it's a guideline.
It's almost like you said, Reverend Walker, what do you do in your own personal homes? Do you have a reserve in case there's an emergency? Or you don't? If you don't, then you're in trouble. If you do, you still, you'll make it.
Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you.
All right. We have several committee reports tonight, starting with the legal policy. Sure.
Okay. I have for the third and final reading, the following policies, following policy and administrative guideline. I have policy 8660, which is revised incidental transportation of students by private vehicle, and administrative guidelines 8660, revised transporting students incidentally by a private vehicle. And I make a motion that we accept these policies as, policy and administrative guideline as read.
Hold on. Second.
So these are presented for a third reading, and they've been motioned for approval.
Yes.
We have it moved and properly seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yeah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And I have a second reading of a number of policies that we were briefed on extensively tonight. And I will proceed with first policy 5336, which is a new policy, which is care of students with diabetes. Form 5336-F1, which again is a new policy written notification to school employees regarding training to provide diabetes care to students. Policy 8500, which is a revised policy for food services. Administrative guideline 8500, which is a new policy regarding food and beverage sales. Administrative guideline 8500A, which is a new policy regarding nutritional guidelines. Policy 8510, which is a revised policy for wellness. Policy 8540, which is a buy policy as to vending machines. Policy 8550, which is a revised policy for competitive food sales. That's the second reading. I would move to waive the third reading and thereafter move for acceptance of these policies as read.
Second.
All right. So we have, we have a motion to waive the, the third reading. So that's the first roll call we would need. Okay. Any questions or concerns about that before we waive that third reading?
I just, I just want to go back to the whole discussion around the diabetes piece. Why can't we add this as a policy? We have a student contract policy. Not that every student, every school acts up, but a teacher knows what to do when they look at the policy, because why we have a policy? And they've all been responsible to look at it. So why don't we just make it mandatory? I mean, make it a part of their training, that everybody has looked at this policy, taken a test, and they know, we know they know it. So what's, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I could... I mean, make it a part of their training, that everybody has looked at this policy, taken a test, and they know, we know they know it. So, what's, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I could, the wellness of any kid in our district and us as administrators and teachers, being aware, this is a very, very important issue. We heard the young man come here and he was basically really pleading with us, basically. I mean, I don't, I'm just asking, why couldn't we just add that? Why is that a, just not, just a structural pain issue?
The template came out as advised to meet the law as written by the legislature of Ohio. We intend to have everybody trained. At this point, if you want to make a change to the policy to make it mandatory, it may then include negotiations regarding work issues, because part of that then could be related to mandatory requirements of everybody to go through those contracts. That isn't the intent of the law. We want to do it and make sure that everybody is trained, that it will take its time to train 3500. We get it done this year, then it's a repeat of those people every year and all new people aboard. It's just a massive undertaking at this time.
So, this is a step?
To get that done.
This is the step to get that done. This is just the first step.
It is not that your comments are not important, it's the fact that it takes a amount of time to put this into force.
But the intent is to make sure everyone.
Yes. Yes. That's why it has a test that will record the answer of the person taking it and that will become part of their employee file, you know, to record that Deborah took it or Laura took it or Veronica took it, that they are aware. And that is the intent, why we made the training online as easy as possible with follow-up from our nurses, because once they do that training, just like if you've ever, have you ever dealt with a diabetic, they have to learn how to inject. So, we've got to make sure that people know how to inject instantly if a person cannot do it for themselves. That takes training and that takes time. We don't learn it overnight.
And it is something that could be required in, say, an in-service day or something like that, but that we can't do that tomorrow. We can do that by, you know, some of them, we have to put the policy in place first and then we can start the training.
Absolutely. And that's why we put it together the way we did. We wanted to show you that the training was already put together so it would go forward very quickly once the policy is approved.
Yeah.
Is, so we can get to start, is that why we're trying to waive the third reading?
And because of, my understanding is because of what Laura talked about with the inspection.
Right. So, we wanted to have that all done and in place when the moderators walked in and their arrival was January 13.
So, it's right after.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be to make the deadline of the week.
So, if a person takes this, goes online, takes the training, takes the test, there's a mandatory follow-up training then to that?
That is correct. We will then inform the student, the health aide and the RNs from childrens that, say, Patrick took the training and he's currently at Case Elementary and we can go in and do those people at that location. Absolutely. But it does take time to teach somebody how to properly inject.
So, Laura, who are we waving?
Waving.
Correct.
We have a motion, let's see.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. This is for waiving the third reading. Roll call please.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we would need a motion to accept, gosh, I can't read it. I'm sorry. The I's are getting tired.
Presented for, okay, accepted presentations of the second reading of the motion. I can't read it, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
For the approval prior to the third reading. Okay. So, to pass it.
Second.
Sorry. I need the new glasses. Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? All right. Hearing done, roll call again.
Can I, item, can I just take that one out and grease the other? Am I allowed to do that?
She can, she can vote no to.
No, word can, can agree to vote on it separately.
Yeah, I would prefer that. I don't want to bundle, because I don't disagree with, I just don't necessarily agree with that.
Which one is that?
So, we need a motion to vote on each item, each one of the policies.
For each one?
I'll make the motion, we roll call each one.
Okay. I need a second for that.
Second.
All right. Moved and properly seconded. Any more discussion on that?
Do we have to do anything with the other motions that were made?
We did a wave and everything.
So, they know we waved, now we're voting on it.
Can we bundle, we can bundle the policy and the form, correct?
Yeah.
Because they go together. All right.
So, am I?
Okay. Are you sure?
No. What I wouldn't have wanted to do was to bundle the first, the second reading. I would have, yeah, to waive the third reading on all of them. But when you bundled it, I raised the third reading on all of the one step. Mr. Lombardi? I'm just telling you, my only concern is for the one. I don't know if you can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't, and so now to go back and agree, I mean, that's.
I'll withdraw my motion to unbundle.
Okay.
So, before us is still presented for the second reading and the motion for approval prior to the third.
And it's been moved and seconded, correct?
For all policies.
So, all we need is roll call for that.
Are you okay with that?
Is everybody okay with that?
Right. No, she's had roll call for this.
For this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are we allowed to go back?
We've already voted. I think what she would like to ask is if anyone would be willing to consider to allow that policy to get a third reading.
Is that one part of the inspection as well, Deborah and Laura? The diabetes care is not? Okay.
Yeah. If I may add, the only thing, making good faith, the training, the training is designed so that if someone other than the health aide or school nurse is going to administer the medicine, they can't do that unless by the state, they've been, they've had that training. And it isn't a policy, you can't mandate everyone to take it. The training is voluntary for an employee to take it. So, at this point to say, every teacher will take it, it does go against the mandate, that it has to be voluntary to take it. So, it's not just making them aware of what diabetes is, we could do a fact sheet on that.
Well, maybe that's what I should be asking them. Maybe there's some circular that goes out to every staff person, just like we did with Ebola, to say A, B, C, D.
I think that would be beneficial so that they could see that awareness in everybody. But the training is meant that an employee that's going to administer medicine instead of the trained person has to be mandated to take this training. But it does say.
Right. I think from the beginning, my question was, it was more educational piece. I thought the training, I thought it was nice if they took a test, fine, but I think it's really important that every staff person.
And they do have like the fact sheets, the health, the school nurse, they have the fact sheets on diabetes, so we, that could be some information that's posted to all staff and that would be them to, you know, read it voluntarily. But, but you can't mandate at this point according to the law, we couldn't mandate.
Well, maybe the terminology mandate for training was not the right terminology in the context of what the law has to say, but I didn't understand it clear. But I am clear about, I think, everybody, that should be as mandatory of a piece of document as the children's conduct, as school conduct requirement. That's what I'm thinking. So, thank you for helping me clear my mind and getting my hands around that. So, I guess that would put me back in the.
So, that could, that could be part of in-service training. Couldn't we make that a part of in-service training, that everybody's kind of going over it as in-service training and don't have, it's not mandatory, but you're just putting it out there for everybody?
It's responsible. It's not an issue of, it's not an issue of mandatory. It's, it's being responsible, that for every student that enters in our building, we're concerned about their health and wellness. To that end, you've got to at least have some information about this very, very important and critical, almost.
Life-threatening.
Life-threatening disease. That's almost.
What's our policy on asthma?
I don't know. But asthma is not before the board right now. I can speak to that. When they bring that before the board, I'd be happy to. And if it's out of line, I'm going to raise the issue about that because if any kid that issued, enters into our school building, their health, wellness, and safety is our responsibility.
You're absolutely correct.
And that means I need to take every effort to make sure I take that under advisement when they're in that building. That's all, Tim. I mean, I'm not debating the issue about whether that's right or wrong. When that comes before me, I'll deal with that one. But today, this one is before us and that's all I'm asking to do, is make sure that we get, make sure people get the tools so that we're responsible to every one of our students in this building. That's all I'm asking for.
And I think not too much to ask.
Right. And I think the answer was given, that we will disseminate that information. We cannot mandate an individual to give someone the insulin or the pill for that care. They have to volunteer to do that, but we can make sure they have the information so they're knowledgeable. And that's correct.
All right. So.
So, we're back on the, that motion.
The original motion, same as with policy 5336 and the four. Okay.
All right. Ready for roll call? Ready for roll call please?
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
All right. We have no need, oh, I'm jumping ahead. Who has other committee reports? I think we had the ones from, sorry, I got sidetracked.
Just thank you for accepting donations. I want to make a brief statement. I've read something here just in the last couple of days as we started to talk about Project Rise and everybody who was so generous with donating to Project Rise. State of Ohio has 46,000 homeless students, just FYI. I know we have too many, a good number, but anyways, just thought I'd share that piece of depressing information. Thank you to the Salvation Army for donation to Project Rise, Kenmore High School, FCCLA for their donation, Dr. Sandra Hudak, Pamela Machuga, sorry Pamela, if I butchered that, she had two different donations. We had donation from First Book to Project Rise, dancing and drumming presentation from Troop 74. We had hats and other things donated by the AACP, the Akron Association of Classified Personnel, to Finley CLC. First Congregation Church made a donation to Finley as well. We had a cash donation from the Word Church to North High School for the purchase of bowling shirts for the bowling team, cash donation from the University of Akron to Helen Arnold. We use the student incentives and a $15,000 donation to Hatton, from Hatton PTA to Hatton CLC for the purchase of Chrome Books. I want to thank all those people and churches.
Anything from instructional policy and student achievement?
I just wanted to mention that Akron Waterways, we knew the city of Akron is working on a pre-apprentice program for job opportunities and apprenticeships in the construction field. The mayor has made a commitment that a significant number, up to 50% of those jobs, go to Akron residents. They've been hosting open house, houses across the city. The, the first one was at Urban League on the 24th of November. There's one coming up on the 15th of December at ECLC from 5:30 to 7:30. So, I know we, in our vocation, vocations, we have mason areas, we have electricians, all of those are, and even for unskilled laborers, some of our young folks will be entering our system in the coming graduation period. You know, there's nothing like when vocation training meets real-life opportunity. I think this presents, and so I would encourage not only the, the people in the community in general, but our students who are graduate, who are graduating, who are interested in continuing along their vocational career path, to consider attending that, that meeting on, again, the 15th at ECLC from 5:30 to 7:30.
Anything unfinished business or new business to bring forward tonight? All right. Now that I was jumping ahead to, we have no need for executive session tonight. So, we all have a holiday and Happy New Year.
Amen.
And the motion.
Second.
Mr. Properly Seconded, roll call please.
Have these holidays.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?